Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the Board, Select Board Meeting at 6:30. We didn't have any indication that there was any public comment. So I guess we're going right into the appointments.
Is this better? Much better? So we didn't have any indication that there was any public comment today?
Yeah, we got to do the National Anthem. National Anthem. Pledge of Allegiance.
Thanks, Mike. So if you all please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, just as justice for all. So first thing on our agenda is appointments. And I think to make it a little bit easier, we're going to do it by the individual boards. And if you would be so kind as to make the motions, I know that I'm on a couple of these boards. I'll make the motion for myself.
Oh, boy. All right. I'll give this a shot. Probably screw it up, but that's all right. Let's start off with the make a motion to appoint Steve Baker, Patrick Molina, Jason Naves, Amanda Benneker, Michelle Di Tomaso, Leah Bates, Lisa Chandler, Beth Greenhagen, Liz Zimmerman, and Nicole Sargent to the Groveland Day Committee. That is a one-year term.
So just a quick edit. Yeah, I think you mixed up recreation. You did a combination.
Ah.
You had a split.
Damn it.
All right, we're going to scratch that one real quick. We'll start back up top here.
Second try.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll screw it up one more time, why not? We'll start off with the Board of Registers. It's a three-year term, and we're going to make a motion to appoint Kathy Green and Leah Crane. It is a three-year term.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Michael Dempsey, William Grimm III, and Thomas Schaefer on the Conservation Commission for a three-year term.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I'd like to appoint, make a motion to appoint Irene Thomas and Marie Waller for the Council on Aging, which is a three-year term.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Brian Connel, William Dunn, John Gunfoyle, Steve Collins, DJ McNulty, Chris Goodwin, and Angus Jennings to the Economic Development Committee for a one-year term.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? What's that?
Just ask if you want to go back to the Cultural Council afterwards.
Afterwards.
Right, I told you I was going to screw that up.
Yes. Yes. All in favor?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Larry Eldaro to the Cultural Council, which is a six-year term.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Melissa Baker, James Scanlon, and Alexander Woods as the alternate for the Finance Board for a three-year term, two-year term, and a one-year term.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Now, this is where I screwed up first. All right. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Steve Baker, Patrick Molina, Jason Naves, Amanda Beckoner, Michelle Di Tomaso to the Recreation Committee for a one-year term.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
All right, this is.
I'll abstain.
This is where I screwed up, huh? So I'd make a motion to appoint Leah Bates, Lisa Chandler, Beth Greenhagen, Liz Zimmerman, and Nicole Sargent to the Groveland Day Committee, which is a one-year term.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I'd like to make, make a motion to appoint Kathy Castrenellis, William O'Neil, David Greenbaum, Stephanie Bartlett, and Jan Dempsey to the Trash and Recycling Committee, which is a one-year term.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Brian Callahan as an associate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is a three-year term.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
And I'd like to make a, oh no, oh yeah, yep, here we go. See, fourth time screwing up. Make a motion to appoint Dana Moody to the Board of Assessors for a three-year term.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Do you want me to list off the vacancies or?
Sure, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, great. We got one vacancy on the Economic Development Committee. We got three vacant seats on the Conservation Commission. Those are both one-year terms. We got two vacant seats on the Finance Board. One's a one-year term and one is an alternate and serves two years. One vacancy on the Historic Commission, which is a three-year term. We got two vacant seats for alternates on the Recreation Committee, which is a one-year term. Two vacant seats on the Groveland Day Committee, which is a one-year term, and two vacant seats on the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is a three-year term.
And just for point of clarification on the Conservation Commission, their associate members, which was voted on by annual town meeting this past April.
Oh, yeah, and, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, those are associates too. Does that matter? All right, glad I only screwed up four times.
It's all right. The more you do it, the better, the easier it gets, the better you'll be at it. The other appointments listed here are going to be done on the 8th or the 22nd. So from there, we have a one-day liquor license for Natalie Jones of East Broadway Street, Haverhill, for a private event on July 7, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. to be held at V.C. Memorial Park. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for, what was it, Natalie Jones of East Broadway Street, Haverhill, for the private event, July 7, 2024, from 4:00 to 8:00, held at the V.C. Memorial Park.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Yep.
Next, I look for a motion to approve the Select Board Meeting Minutes from June 10, 2024.
I'll make, that's.
They look to be in order on move of passage.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I'm going to abstain. I wasn't in attendance.
All in favor?
Yep.
Three and one abstention. Next is the Housing Production Plan Review, which is something we're going to go over the strategies. Has anybody gone over the strategies and come up with any comments or things you'd like to see added or changed?
Yeah, under this production plan, this committee, the Groveland Housing Production Plan Stakeholder Committee, I think there's some that's left off of that, that should have been on that committee. There should be a representative from Water Department on there, so know what the impact of the water system. The fire police for what they need for staffing. Public works if they're going to be maintaining, maintaining the roads. And to me, they should have been on that, they should have been on that committee to give their input.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. That makes, that would make sense.
And I'd like to see, I'd like to see this and the MBTA Communities Act before we, we vote on it, fully discuss it, I think that we should have the impact from the Planning Board.
Oh, yeah, the Planning Board's going to get a vote on it first.
And I think there should be a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, even if it's on an off-meeting night, for them to weigh in on it. There's, there's some red flags that, that I can see in reading both of these.
Well, right now, the thing that we're, I mean, the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, this is just a guideline for housing. In terms of fire, police, roads, that's something that would work with this plan. The strategies that are here for us to look at and say, hey, we should add this, or we should subtract this, or we should do something with that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So it's not something that they're going to participate in putting their two cents in, because this is just an overall plan of what they, what we would like to see done and how we'd like to achieve it. And then it's up to them to follow suit and say, hey, okay, this is what we're going to need to get there. And then we can adjust it and change it as we go along, because it's more of a template and a guideline. But right now, before it's finalized, we have an opportunity to adjust it and change some of these strategies and add to the strategy, and that's, that's what we should be looking at. So if, for a quick reference, you'd be looking at 28 through 32, because that's where the strategy is. The first part talks about the 40B. With the project that's going in over at Sewell Street, that would give us safe harbor, providing it's permitted in time, which is getting close. And then what they recommend is that we keep our minds open to friendly 40B opportunities so we can control some of the things that go in place. Because even though we reach safe harbor, we're not going to stay there. Because as people move out and people sell off their multi-acre places and single-family homes go in, eventually, we're going to fall out of safe harbor. And when that happens, we're going to open ourselves up to another Sewell Street project going, where we don't want it. And so when we have the opportunity to talk to some people that want to come in and do a friendly 40B, we should discuss it and see what we can do and see what we can work with to make something happen that would be less, less impactful and still count towards our 40B goals.
Right.
And numbers. So I know when we discussed it last time, our big focus was just going to be on whether or not we wanted to add or subtract anything from the five, six strategies, seven strategies that they had listed here. And those are the pages that they are. I did print out 20 of them, but a few more people showed up than that. So if anybody would like a copy.
And for those that are following along at home or have their phones available, this is also on our website, under the Housing Production Plan.
Number six.
Is there anything you want to say about, specifically about the actual strategies that they put forth?
What are you going up, up to page 36?
Yeah, 35. 35 or 36. Yeah, 36, I guess.
Yeah, well, this conceptual project here, senior house at 36 Garrison Street, 90 units, I mean, that, that just seems way over the top to me. I think it's, I think it's around six acres, maybe. 90 units, I mean, that's, you realize the amount of vehicles that'll be going in and out of that street on Garrison Street?
Well, actually, I think we do have a pretty good idea, because we can look at Nichols Village, which has 15 more units at 105.
That's on the main road.
It is, it is, 100%. But, but we get to know how many vehicles that'll be coming in and out pretty easily by looking at their traffic report. And that's information that will be coming, because we've asked for it.
They did a traffic study, they only did it two days during the week. That's not typical procedure for a traffic study. It should be done for at least three weeks.
Okay, well, well, well.
I'm sorry, Jason, from a Wednesday morning to a Friday morning.
Don't you have to stand up and identify yourself?
Yeah, probably. But I'd rather.
Get through this.
But I, I think a lot more work needs to be done. And at some point, the neighbors are going to have to be able to weigh in on this through the, through the Planning Board, I'm sure.
Well, I think it's probably going to be Zoning Board and probably us here. But they haven't even put that through their application yet, through the town. They have applied for the state, because it's going to be affordable, and they're asking for funding from the state. And they are asking for a friendly 40B at this time. However, keep in mind, if we do fall out of graces, what could potentially happen? Because that's 6.4 acres, that lot. You know what else is 6.4 acres? Where the unit on Sewell Street has three buildings and a clubhouse, all complete with parking, four stories, 144 units.
So it could be much worse.
Do they pay taxes?
You're talking about 181, or?
No, I'm talking about Sewell Street, the project that's over behind Greenwood Auto.
Yeah, the.
That's Salem Street.
Salem Street, sorry.
194 units, 48 are affordable.
Yeah. The, what they have in six acres is 144 units, and that lot on Garrison is six acres. But that's a different type. Zoning doesn't apply for 40B.
Well, it does, 40B does. But if they've got their quota, you people have to say, okay? You people have to say.
Right, well, that's just it. As long as we have our quota. But as soon as we fall short of that quota, because that quota doesn't grow unless we add affordable housing.
Right, but you could be looking for a reasonable property that they develop, spend a place like that.
We, we don't always have that option, because we don't, we don't choose the properties, because we don't own the property.
But you control that. Especially when your quota's met for the state, you control that. The board controls that, okay? That is a benefit.
They have a, you have a property in the letter, right here, the flag is more guarded, they say a low income tax credit, right here. And they also have said things like, people in the town, they said the Council on Aging backs us. I was reading online last night, Council on Aging does this kind of tool about this. And the letter also says.
People, people can't hate you, Christine, why don't you come up here to the podium and identify yourself?
Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it. I really do. And I'll be brief. First of all, we're really upset with this, okay? You have a Housing Production Plan, and you have a cast of people who participated in it, and you haven't asked one single resident, one single stakeholder from the community. You have elected officials and appointed officials on it. Great. But how about the people who live in that area? Let me be clear, because there's been a lot of stuff on Facebook that this group is against housing for the elderly. That's not what this is about. There are plenty of people in this room who are over 62, and I'm not going to ask them to stand up. You can't stand up. That's not the issue. The issue is the location. There's a Housing Production Plan that has 36 Garrison Street in it as a conceptual issue. It hasn't even been approved by the Planning Board yet, and the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission has chosen, has chosen to put in the Housing Production Plan. I don't think that's right, and I don't think anybody else does, too. So what we're asking for is an opportunity to have a public hearing on this Housing Production Plan. I think that's only fair. There was, Mrs. Castrenellis asked about it last time, and the answer that was given was it's not required. Well, just because it's not required doesn't mean it's not good practice. So we would appreciate it if we could have a public hearing. I'll answer the question that I came up to answer. Our application has been made to the state. On behalf of Bethany's Community, Bethany Communities, they have submitted a project eligibility application for the Garrison project. That went on June 6, the Planning Board got a letter. A copy went to other people. And we're, quite frankly, we're quite insulted that it says the abutters have been consulted, and not a single abutter has been spoken to. They put together a traffic study in two days, they didn't even do anything on a weekend. I could go on and on, I'm not going to. But I just want to say that you are our constituents, and we see your responsibility to look out for the welfare of our town, the welfare of us, and that's what zoning does. And this is a contradiction of zoning. 36 Garrison Street is an R2 zone, that's residential. You're going to ruin the area by allowing this to go through. We have to wait for the 40B application to go through, we have to wait for the eligibility for the tax credit, and then go from there. But I just want to say that a lot of us have been scared by, well, if it's 40B, you can't do anything about it. You certainly can. You have control through the Zoning Board. And I have all kinds of literature here, I'm not going to read it right now. But anyways, all we're asking is that you give us an opportunity to speak and turn, apply good practice here. Give us an opportunity to have a public hearing on this Housing Production Plan. We would really appreciate that. Look out for us. We put you in office, take care of us now. Take care of the community. I think we deserve it.
Who else would like to speak? Go ahead. Absolutely.
I just wanted to say something. I really appreciate, I know you have these rules that we have, but town management know in advance what we're going to talk about. That needs to be thrown out. I really appreciate you suspending the rules and allowing.
Well, I'm not suspending the rules. I knew, I knew everybody was coming, because I am a follower of Facebook. And I knew that we could discuss it under the Housing Plan. And I knew that's what everybody was here for.
So as one of the younger members in the town, I think, based on the demographics that are in this document, if we're worried about an aging town and having affordable housing for people, we want to bring in new generations to keep the town population from declining and losing out on tax revenue, if we build a bunch of affording housing for the elderly in that space, I think that you could find a better use for it. Because it's just going to continue to increase the aging, or the age of the town. Also, based on the numbers, almost 89, 90% of the town is single-family houses. People come to this town because they want to live in a rural-esque setting. They don't want to be in a city where there are a bunch of 5, 10, 20, 90, 144-unit houses. If people are looking for that, there are plenty of other towns in the area that they can go to. But if we start to take that away from this town, it's going to ruin that as an option for those people who want that, like myself. And lastly, that space, while it is six acres, is not necessarily six acres that you can develop. It's on quite a hill in the corner, and it heads back towards a water area or an area that has, is wetlands and can't be developed. I think if we put 90 units and pave that entire lot, it's going to dramatically affect the water runoff in that space into that wetlands area, which abuts my house and a bunch of other people in the area, and is going to increase flooding and potentially the units that are behind that space are going to have more flooding, because that ground is not going to absorb that water. So those are some concerns I have on that. That's all.
Very much. Thank you. Is there anybody else? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Craig Weaver. I live on 25 Cannon Hill Avenue, and I'd just like to state that, I'd like to reiterate what some other people have said about looking after the people that live in this town. We've had enough representation of outside interests, special interests in this town. I've been on, what this gentleman was just talking about flooding. I've been on the receiving end of, when they build Homestead Lane, we told them, if you do what you're planning on doing, you will flood our properties. And it's happened. My property is eroding, I'm having issues. Now, nobody cares. They went ahead and rode over the top of us, and now I have issues I spent thousands trying to mitigate, and nobody cares. So let's be careful what we're doing, and keep in mind that, let's look after our fellow townspeople and residents of this town. That's, should be the main object of what we're all here for. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No worries.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Lee. I'm the Director of the Council on Aging. Just wanted to speak real quick. Somebody had mentioned that we weren't aware, we were aware, just nothing formally as you, if you are listening to our Board Meeting that, that took place last week. So we, we are aware of the project at the Board Meeting. It was requested that we request more information directly from the source so that we could speak knowledgeably. So we have asked Bethany Communities, and they sent us their communications. The Board is reviewing it. And, you know, once we have a full understanding of what's going on, then, then we'll definitely hope to take part in conversation in more detail. But thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
The previous Housing Production Plan says that Groveland seniors would like to age in place, stay in their own home, and get support in their own home. I think if there's extra money in the town, the EIC money, or there was some kind of account that all this money's been saved in, I think that would be a great effort that the town could complete. The other thing that I'm upset about is, I can count on three hands now, the number of people who said, I'll just move out of town if that goes up, because it's going to change the rural character of the, of the community. And in your Housing Production Plan, it says something like Groveland has 4% people in poverty, Essex County has 10%, Merrimack Valley has 10%, and Massachusetts has 10%. So there's a disconnect there somehow. And the last thing, as far as the MBTA goes, either you're a commuter, commuter, commuter community, or a high-speed something community, or a small community, or a small town. We are on the lower level. We are a small town, and we need to maintain that character. If you look at the initial paragraph of the zoning ordinance, it talks about respecting the town in that way. it talks about respecting the town in that way. Geography, history, and scenic views. So, please have a public hearing to get more information. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you.
Senator Tarr, would you like to get up and say something? Not that I'm trying to put you on the spot. But since you're here.
But he'll take it.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the members. I actually came to provide you with a legislative update, but hearing about the amount of concern in the room about this project with which I am totally unfamiliar, I would be happy to offer you a couple of thoughts. The first is, I noted that application has been made for the very first step in a comprehensive permit, which is for a letter of site eligibility. As I think everyone in the room probably knows, you cannot proceed with an application under Chapter 40B unless you have first granted a letter of site eligibility from a subsidizing agency. Meaning that they would be willing, in fact, to subsidize the project, because without that, it's not qualified as a Chapter 40B. So I would point out for folks that have a problem with this particular project and want to raise objections, a good first place to start is actually weighing in with regard to that letter of site eligibility with whomever it's been submitted to. Usually it's Mass Housing, but there are a couple of other eligible subsidizing agencies as well. I would also point out that there is an extensive process under Chapter 40B for local consideration of what's known as a comprehensive permit, which consolidates all of the permits that a municipality is eligible to grant into a single process before the Zoning Board of Appeals. And that is a lengthy process, and be happy to discuss that more if and when this project gets to that point. In addition to that, I heard referenced the notion of the safe harbor, or maintaining the 10% of subsidized housing inventory in a community as an absolute defense to having to entertain a comprehensive permit application subject to Chapter 40B. And there was an allusion to this made, but I think it bears emphasizing that the best way to avoid a Chapter 40B application in a location where you do not want it is to take matters into your own hands through a housing production plan and zone for housing where in fact you do want it. So taking the proactive path to avoid a consequence that you would not find favorable has always been, in my opinion, the best way to approach it. Then the last thing I would mention, and I do want to welcome my colleague from the House who just joined us, I would add that we are in the Senate, on Thursday, about to take up a housing bond bill which has many considerations for how to build housing locally that communities would welcome. For instance, there are provisions relative to the low-income housing tax credit, which I think may be in play here with regard to this project. And a number of other financing mechanisms that you might find helpful to advance your housing production plan if and when that plan is agreed upon. So I guess I would offer our assistance in any way the town chooses to go. And as always, Mr. Chairman, I look forward to working with you, as well as the town administrator, to be helpful. Again, this for me is my case of first impression with regard to this. I was not aware of it prior to this conversation. Apparently, I do not follow social media as closely as you do, Mr. Chairman. But would always be happy to be helpful in going in whatever direction the town ultimately would like to go in. And with your permission, I'd be, I know she's walked in late, so- Representative, we're discussing a potential Chapter 40B project, and I know you just walked in the room, so I don't want to unfairly put you on the spot, but I do think it's fair to say that both of us are extremely receptive to communications with all of you, and would be looking forward to working with you, again, as the process moves forward. If a letter of site eligibility is not forthcoming, that would prohibit a comprehensive permit application, and that may be the end of the road. If it is granted, then there is a lot more process, and we're happy to work with everyone for that. And we would look to the town and the town administrator to be the conduit for that communication, which we would be more than willing to have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Sure. No, so there are only a couple of agencies that can issue that letter of site eligibility. Mass Housing is one, I believe the Mass Housing Partnership is another. But we could certainly provide you with that list, but if you can- the town should have been copied on that letter, seeking a letter of site eligibility. And it should be, the letter would be addressed to someone, and you can identify which agency it was that way. And again, I don't want to speculate, there are three or four, and it's usually only one of two. It should be, yes, yes. Yes. Yes, yes. Okay, very good. Yep. So I just want, did not want you to miss that opportunity, because that's the very beginning of the process. Right, and I would ask, in the future, when you write letters, and even if you can retrieve the ones that you've already sent, or copies, if you would send them to us, that would be extremely helpful, so that we can understand your concerns. You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Tarr. With that, I think we'll jump right into the legislative update.
I will tell you, when I first walked in, I was hoping you were all here to hear the legislative update. Would you like us to proceed to the podium?
Sure.
I sort of like this game show model where I get the handheld mic.
Mingle among the crowd.
Is there something underneath their chairs?
All right. All right, so, thank you. We're actually happy to be here to provide you with the legislative update. I want to thank the town administrator for reaching out to arrange this. It's a conversation that we're more than happy to have, and would love to do it on a regular basis, so that we can let you know what's happening on Beacon Hill. The main message that we would bring tonight is that we only have until the end of July in the formal legislative session. And that's an important thing to keep in mind, because at the end of the formal legislative session, we will not entertain legislation that requires a roll-call vote, or that has significant debate. And so right now, we are essentially scrambling, trying to get everything done by the end of that period, including the state budget. So students of government, and I would not be surprised if there were quite a few in this room, students of government understand that the fiscal year for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts ends at the end of June, and the new fiscal year begins in July. So our goal is to have a budget in place by the beginning of July. It is not uncommon for us to miss that deadline, but usually not by a very lot. Usually, you know, if we go a month past that, that would be a lot. So we're hoping to get it done. And with regard to that, there are some very significant items that touch on municipal government, and would in fact impact Groveland. The very first, and at the top of the list, is that we were at a meeting not that long ago where Chief Gillen also happened to be present, and we were discussing emergency response vehicles. And he had indicated to us that Groveland does not have a side-by-side four-wheel-drive emergency response vehicle. And so we requested that he submit the information for that to the town administrator, which he did. And she then forwarded that to us, because as part of the budget process, we, when the budget approaches every year, ask the communities what their priorities are. So the administrator submitted that, and I believe the total was somewhere around $50,000. I could be wrong about that, but she was very good at sending us all of the invoice information. And Representative Ramos and I partnered with that. And the reason that we partnered is because oftentimes, if somebody on one side, either the House or the Senate, puts an item in the budget, the other side is reluctant to also fund additional money for that project. So she was able to secure $25,000 for the vehicle. I had to be a little bit creative, so I earmarked the budget for $15,000 for equipment for the vehicle, so that together, we would come up with the total of the amount of money needed to purchase the vehicle. So right now, the House and Senate versions of the budget are being reconciled by a six-member conference committee, three members of the Senate, three members of the House. And we're hoping that both of those earmarks are going to survive, and we can come and cut the ribbon with you and perhaps get a ride in this vehicle, because Chief Gillen has given us great detail about what it will look like and what its attributes will be. So we look forward to that, and we certainly hope we can deliver that. But beyond that, there are important elements of this budget for the town and for the Penntucket Regional School District. So for the town, one of the things that we're hoping to do is increase the amount of unrestricted general government aid. This is the money that comes to the community, essentially without strings, that you can spend for whatever your local priorities are. The House version of the budget would increase the town's share of that by about $8,000. The Senate would increase it by about $26,000. So we're certainly hoping for the higher of those numbers in all of these accounts. The other thing which is significant is the issue of Chapter 70 assistance. And we all know, because we've been in discussions relative to Chapter 70, and the problems that we have with how it funds a lot of our local school districts, and Penntucket is no exemption, no exception. Unfortunately, over the years, one of the only ways that we've been able to help Penntucket is something called minimum per pupil aid. And that's because the formula by which we distribute aid is based on enrollment. And Penntucket has had declining enrollment. And so we default to a minimum provision where we say, okay, normally you would get a reduction because you're losing enrollment, but we are going to give you a minimum increase every year. And significantly, the House began this process. By increasing that minimum per pupil number, this past year was about $60 a student. The House went to $106, and the Senate went to $110 per student. So we're hoping, again, for the higher of those numbers, which would have a very, very significant impact on the budget for the Penntucket Regional School. So again, that's subject to negotiation, and we hope that we're going to have that done very soon. And that would have a significant impact. And so, hopefully soon, we'll be able to get that done. In addition to that, because the end of the legislative year is rapidly approaching, we have a number of very major bills in play. And some of them are bond bills. So a few weeks ago, we passed an information technology bond bill, which is by and large for state kind of expenses with regard for information technology. However, we are now contemplating a couple of other bills that are very significant. One that I mentioned is the housing bond bill, which the House has already completed its work on, and the Senate will take up on Thursday. In addition to that, we have an energy siting bill, which looks at the process for permitting renewable energy projects, and would provide tools for you if an application were to come forward as to how to do that. That's one side. The other side of it is to try to make sure that those applications are processed in a timely fashion. Win, lose, or draw, just to try to give some certainty to these projects, because we do need to develop more alternative energy. And then in addition to that, we have a veterans bill that is very significant, that, again, the House has completed, the Senate has completed. We are not yet officially in conference committee, but we will be soon to be able to provide more benefits for our veterans. And it's important to note that Massachusetts leads the country in support for our veterans. But we can't rest on our laurels, we need to continue to evolve and move forward. And that bill will do some significant things relative to that. I will only call to your attention one of the things that we're hoping to accomplish. And I'm going to do that because it was my amendment to the bill. But one of the things that we do in Massachusetts, as you all know, is to offer a property tax benefit for veterans with a disability. And the way that it currently works is that the Veterans Administration establishes the percentage of someone's service-connected disability. And in order to be eligible for a property tax benefit, you have to have at least a 10% service-connected disability. It maxes out at 100% service-connected disability. The difficulty is that unlike other states, Massachusetts doesn't use a sliding scale. So there's essentially a donut hole for everyone between 10 and 100%. And so we passed an amendment to look at how we could do what other states do, which is to have a sliding scale. And so while the amendment doesn't do it, it sets the stage for it, because we need to study it, we need to understand the cost, we need to understand how to do it fairly. So that's the veterans bill, it's known as the Heroes Act, and we hope to have that passed very soon. There's also an economic development bill that is making its way through the legislative process. That too is a bond bill, in many respects. And one of the things that we need to remind ourselves about bond bills is that they authorize spending, they do not appropriate spending. And so when we put things in bond bills, they allow the governor, if she so chooses, to issue bonds and borrow money for those specific projects. But there is no compulsion for her to do it. So when you see the big numbers in a bond bill, like $10 million for X, Y, or Z, doesn't mean that that money will actually ever get spent. It means that we're allowing the administration, if they choose, to borrow for some or all of those things. There is a maternal health bill that is moving through the legislature. And so that I don't monopolize the conversation, which it seems like I'm drifting toward. I'm going to stop there and allow my House colleague to speak, but not before I say that she is a wonderful legislative partner, and we're lucky to have the team that we do.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I am pleasantly surprised by the large room. When I pulled up, I had to park kind of further away. So just piggybacking on that, yes, the House last week passed a large maternal health bill, which I am really hopeful will make its way through the Senate before the end of the session. It really does expand on much-needed services, expanding on services, including midwifery, and requiring Mass Health to cover midwifery, which is actually quite important as we try to combat the high maternal mortality rates in the Commonwealth. And, I mean, it's a huge bill, so I don't want to go too far into it. But I do think it has the potential to really make a difference in the lives of many women going through pregnancy and childbirth. It expands access to pre- and postpartum depression, and includes postpartum depression screenings. So, you know, anyone who has been through a pregnancy can say it's a challenging time, and that often has resulted in, and unfortunate, there's a high maternal suicide rate. So hopefully, we can work through that. We also passed a large substance abuse disorder-related bill, which requires insurers to cover emergency opiates, opiate such as Naxalon, without cost sharing. It provides further prescriber training and licensed recovery coaches. So, and again, I think the biggest thing from that bill is that if you are carrying a baby to term, and you are on methadone or other treatments to help you come off of an addiction, currently the way the law is, is that the hospital is mandated reporter. And so that essentially, as soon as you give birth, even though you've been watched and done everything you need to do to birth the baby as healthy as possible, that child may immediately be taken away from you, and at least automatically called. And so DCF would automatically be involved. That would no longer be the case, it would allow you to continue on your medical journey, not cause trauma to the mother or the child in the meantime. So that, I think, has the ability to then take the stigma off of getting help if you are pregnant. That's the hope, so we're hoping to see that move through as well. Another one that Senator Tarr did not mention was we just, that was just signed into law last week by our governor, was the revenge porn bill, which includes updating the language around 209A to include coercive control. But also to really set parameters around revenge porn becoming illegal, but setting really good, I think, safety guards around when those involves minors, so that, you know, if it's, if children who really don't understand the repercussions of maybe sending a picture of their, you know, ex-girlfriend, there's some rehabilitation and other programming to defer, and make sure that that isn't happening in the future. So I was so happy to see the conference committee come together on that one, and get a bill out, and have that signed into law last week. And I think that will really, and it also includes some public service announcements too, so that people are aware of what this is, you know, and what, you know, what the crime is involved in it. And hopefully, to bring, you know, some education to our younger folk who are using social media at a time when their brains are not quite developed enough to be using it and understanding the consequences of its use. So I think it really does, you know, toe the line between punishing where it should be punished and rehabilitating for those kids who really just don't quite understand the consequence. the consequences. So that was exciting to see come to the floor. The House also recently passed the Parentage Act, which will really bring our laws in line with the rest of the country in terms of providing parentage to primarily LGBTQ community members who right now are often adopting. Both parents are adopting their child, so it would eliminate the need for that. I'm hopeful we'll see that come through the Senate as well. And, you know, yeah, I mean, I think that's, it's been a busy month. And we are, the House is taking up the Economic Development Bond this week. We scrambled to get amendments in today, but like my esteemed senator says, it isn't guaranteed money. And so I'm often careful, you know, where we tread with bond bills because it can be a bit of a jump. I recently was at an event with Congressman Moulton, and I'm excited to see the funding that he has secured for the water mains here. And so I'm in, I think we're both in constant contact with Congressman Moulton's office and looking for ways to see what we can do to help bolster any federal applications for infrastructure. Because again, anything we can do to help bring funding back to the town, we know, is vital. And I do want to say, I do think he was, he didn't want to put a dollar number to it when we talk about Pennsaukett, but, you know, looking at it today, I mean, we're looking at over $200,000 if the House number is what comes out. And, you know, given where the House is at 104, the Senate's at 110, I'd be surprised to see it fall shockingly. You know, I don't think we're going to see it back to that $60 per student number. So really, it does have and will have a longstanding impact from, you know, for the town. And I think, you know, you guys made a tough decision last year in passing your override. I'm hoping this will give you a breath to know that that's not something you're going to be having to face in the near future. So I think, I usually don't have to look at notes, but there's been so much going on in the last month that I wanted to make sure I covered everything. Yeah, I think that's about it.
So just two other quick things, picking up with Representative Leftoff relative to education funding. We know that the Chapter 70 formula is a huge problem. And in the Senate version of the budget, we were able to add a provision to study that, to look at some specific elements of it. I personally believe it's time for another Foundation Budget Review Commission, but that's a story for another day. But hopefully, we'll get to that. And I also added a provision to study how we deliver special education in Massachusetts, to understand the models that we use, how efficacious they are, and the cost impact of those models. So hopefully, taken together, those two amendments would set the stage for further action in the future. So I apologize, it is a lot, but you can understand our temptation. We never have an audience this big.
Wait, I do have one more thing. We also have done some transportation bills, so there is a lot of money coming to regional transportation. And for those of you who are aware, MEVA is going to be adding new lines coming through Groveland, which is really exciting. I think it'll really open up the opportunity for the workforce here in Groveland to get to Haverhill, to get to Newburyport. So that's a great win. We've got some great advocates at MEVA as well, and we're constantly working with MEVA to make sure that they're doing what they can. So I'm excited to see those come into place. Yeah.
That's awesome. Did you want to take any questions from the board?
Sure. We're particularly good at true and false.
Does anybody have any questions, Phil?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Ed.
Senator, it always amazes me how you can do it without notes. And you never, when you were over there for 30 minutes and when you were here for an hour, you never looked at your notes. But you do a great job. Well, you mentioned special education funding.
Yes.
And which, I brought it up before. It always bothers me under the special education budget or portion. The individual towns, out of the special ed funds, we're paying for nursing care for people that will never see the inside of a classroom. I think that should be coming out of medical rather than special ed. And that, and I don't know how many we have here in Groveland, but there never seems to be any movement to get that where it should be in medical rather than education. How can you call it education, special ed money, when the person's never going to see the inside of a classroom? Their bed confined, they're in a special home, but we're paying it out of our school budget. And I don't think that's right.
So I'm happy to answer that. And as you know, we've tried to impact this in the past. Hopefully, the study that I've been able to get will help us begin to look at that, number one. Number two, there are different protocols within the special education law, and I always get them mixed up. There's 502, 504. One of them is a medical component. But here's the irony of it. The only insurance payer that pays for that medical component is Medicaid. The commercial insurers do not pay under that provision. So Pennsaukett does in fact bill for the medical component of some of those costs, and Mass Health or Medicaid pays for some of that, but the other commercial insurers do not. And so one of the things that has been proposed over the years is to try to compel the other insurers to pay. The difficulty with that always is the insurance carriers will make the claim that including those costs will drive up everyone's premium. So there's a tension there. But I very much understand the concern, and there is an issue about when something is medical alone and when something is education. I would also say, though, that the laws, the relevant laws here are Massachusetts Chapter 766 and the federal IDEA law. And both of those together do compel us, in many instances, to cover what our medical cost in order that a student might be able to properly advance educationally. But it is a concern, and it has been for a long time, and I'm hoping that we're going to shed some light on it among every other thing in special education in the study that I'm proposing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'm all set.
No, I've been paying attention. I've been seeing what's been going on.
I do have a question. It's a little off-topic, it hasn't been discussed. I know back in March, I attended a webinar about the Empowerment Act, and there was discussion about moving or allowing the municipalities to shift property tax from the seniors and spread it out amongst other people that weren't qualified for the discount. I was wondering if you had heard anything else about that, or?
Sure. I can do it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So in the governor's original filing of the Municipal Empowerment Act, one of the provisions would do something that we've been getting a lot of Home Rule petition requests for, which is to allow a community to freeze the property tax of someone who reaches 70 years of age and meets a means test. So it wouldn't be for everyone across the board. It would be based on your assets, your income, and things of that nature. The Municipal Empowerment Act has not passed yet, and we haven't taken it up yet. However, the housing bond bill, which we are going to take up on Thursday, has an opportunity to try to pass that, and I am offering it as an amendment. Because what happens now is that you, communities can do this, but they have to ask the permission of the legislature. And so communities will go to town meeting, pass a Home Rule petition, send it to us, and they usually send one of two versions. One is means-tested, and one is not, and we routinely pass them. So what the governor was attempting to do is say, you shouldn't have to go through a Home Rule petition. We should pass a standard bill that you can then go to town meeting and just adopt, as opposed to it working the other way around. So I'm going to try to do that on Thursday. Stay tuned.
Awesome. Anybody else have any other questions? Thank you very much, and I'll be sure to make sure that something controversial is on the next agenda that you attend.
Well, I would only ask that you put it on Facebook that we're going to be there, and apparently that works quite well. So thank you. And thanks to all of you for your patience in listening to all this information. We really appreciate it, and it's an honor to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we're going to go to the MBTA Community Act.
Good evening. I'm just going to get my computer set up, and then I'll be right back.
Awesome. Thank you.
Do you want to drop the earlier speakers?
No worries.
Oh, my God. It always amazes me the way he talks.
Oh, geez, I love it. I love watching him because he's been doing this so long.
I would, quarter of the way through, I'd be like, did I really say this?
Did I say that?
I'd be repeating myself the whole time.
I thought we were.
It's amazing.
I thought we were still on the housing production plan.
Huh?
I thought we were still on the housing production.
We can circle around back to that. We can circle back down if you have anything. I knew that Senator was going to be here, or the representative was going to be here at 7:00, so I wanted to get that out and don't want to keep her waiting as well.
That timing was awesome. Put him on the spot.
I did. We'll see how that goes.
I know. Poor Adrian comes in just like, what did I walk into?
You're all set.
All right. Thank you all. You can hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. Excellent. So for the record, my name is Emily Ennis from Ennis Associates. I am delighted to be here tonight, also very impressed at the number of people. My, this is the very first meeting that we're going to have to talk about 3A, and I do want to make that very clear, that you all are here on the beginning portions of this. My goal tonight is simply to introduce the topic and some of the implications for Groveland. And then I have a little workshop piece. I don't have enough toys for everybody because I wasn't expecting such a large crowd, but I do have some extra sets of maps, so we'll figure out how to pass them around when we get to that point. So as part of this process, what we're doing is we're looking at the Section 3A, which is a new law. I'm going to walk through what it is. As I said, this is the kickoff tonight. We will be having a public process, outreach and engagement, to try and bring as many voices in as possible, so I'm delighted that you're here now. I don't have the schedule for that today. We wanted to have this first workshop, and then you should be expecting to see probably over the next month and a half, the schedule of when those meetings are. So with that, what is Section 3A? Everybody knows it as the MBTA Communities Act, but in fact, the law itself is Section 3A. So this was a law passed in 2021. It established a requirement that 177 designated MBTA communities, and you can see the reference for what an MBTA community is, must have zoning. And this is, we're going to come to this idea of zoning more and more frequently throughout this. But must have zoning that provides for at least one district a reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as a right. That housing, that zoning, rather, cannot have age restrictions and shall be suitable for families with children. It must have a minimum gross density of 15 dwelling units per acre, and part of the district for those districts that have stations must be within 0.5 miles from a commuter rail, subway, et cetera. There was or is a purpose behind this law, which is to address the housing shortage in Massachusetts. Housing is not financially attainable to many people now. The level that is is dwindling, and the Commonwealth as a whole is at a disadvantage to compete with other states. We are losing businesses, jobs, talent to other states. And placing housing near good, you know, near transit is good policy for a number of reasons, including general housing policy, but economic transportation and climate as well. So those were the reasons behind the law. It's not a lot of things, however, and there's been some misinformation out there, so I want to get ahead of that. It's not a mandate to build housing. This is a zoning law, which means that you're setting up the permissions, you're setting up the options for somebody to have housing, but it's not a mandate to build it. We're going to be talking some numbers fairly soon, and in no way are any of those numbers targets that the town must build to. So this is, it's options, it provides options, but doesn't require anybody to change the use on their property now. It's also not a housing production target. I was hanging out in the hall with so many chairs filled, so I heard you talking about your housing production plan. It's not a production target, and so nobody is required to meet the unit capacity number that we're talking about. It's also not restricted to affordable housing. So this is, in addition to the housing production, this is another common misunderstanding is that there's some sort of assumption that this is all affordable housing. And in fact, it's not. Most of it is market-rate housing. You can have a local option to add affordability, but the amount of affordability you can have is limited. That's been pro and con for many people that I've talked to. And it's also not the only tool that a community has in order to address its housing needs. The Section 3A addresses a certain portion of a community's housing needs. It doesn't speak to deep affordability. It doesn't speak to all possible types of housing that are out there. So a housing production plan is another tool that a community has. There are others out there, but this is other, just one tool in your ability to think about housing. So multifamily housing, it's interesting because I think lots of people, lots of people that I've encountered throughout this process have different ideas of what multi-housing means. And so it's actually defined as a building with three or more residential dwelling units. So a three-family could be a multifamily house, or three row houses in a row, three attached row houses could be a multifamily house, or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit in each building, which is legalese for the absolute minimum is two buildings, each with two units, because that's more than one building on a lot, with more than one unit in each. So two duplexes on a lot. So your minimum multifamily definition is a three-family or three-row houses connected or two duplexes. From there, you can go up to whatever you want to go up. And so this missing middle housing, I think at this point, every consultant working with every community has been showing this same diagram. It's from a firm called Opticos that has done a lot of work on housing. And it's showing the fact that a lot of communities have detached, single-family homes. Some communities have these mid-rise, and obviously, if you're in Boston, you've got a lot taller than mid-rise. But many communities don't have this sort of missing pieces in between. So the duplexes, the triplexes, the kind of 8 to 12, 12 to 20, that sort of housing. And the reason that's important is because it offers different housing types for communities. So if you think of the stages in your life at which you want to have different types of housing, you're growing up in one sort of environment, you're leaving school or leaving college, you're moving into another sort of young professional, you're starting your own family, you want something else, your family's gone off to college, and now that you're looking for something different to live in. So what we like to think of is, does a community have kind of that complete set of housing so that they, so people can spend their entire lives in a community? It's not always possible, but this missing middle housing is a way of getting closer to that. So that's great, there's a law. How do you actually demonstrate that you are in compliance with the law? So you have to submit an application to EOHLC, which you will hear me refer to most often as HLC, because it is the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, and that EOH is just too difficult to pronounce. You have to give them a map, which is the GIS, for those of you who are familiar with Geographic Information Systems. It's a digital map, GIS-shaped files of your district. You have to provide a completed compliance model, and you have to provide the town zoning bylaws and indicate the districts that comply. Now, you don't always have to change your zoning, and this is one of the things that we look at when we start to work with the community. What is your zoning now? Do you actually have to make any changes? And if so, what those are. So with some of the communities I've worked with, we just have to allow multifamily as a right, and everything else is the same. All the dimensional standards are the same, everything else works. Others, we have to, we do an overlay district, and we make another change. So we don't know, because this is the first meeting, where we are yet with Groveland, but part of our process is finding that out. Now, the compliance model is, and I've got a whole bunch of slides at the end that talks about how it works, but it's a two-part model that deals with both an Excel workbook and GIS data. And so those two pieces together, the town zoning, which we read and we put in the requirements, the dimensional standards, and the state database of parcel information, which includes all the calculations related to land. What happens is you take the geography, you put it into the model, and then the model takes the zoning parameters, the dimensional standards, applies it to the geography, and you get a result that tells you whether or not you're compliant. The nice thing, and that result's going to be unit capacity, which is the number of overall units, and density, which is the number of units per acre. So I'm going to keep talking through these terms and kind of break them down so you see what that means. So just... So just remember that the model's going to give you unit capacity and density. So there's a couple of factors that go into that. So the first is on the land side, on the geography. There's three different types of land. There's excluded land, there's sensitive land, and there is developable land. So developable land, you can develop on. Developable land may already be developed on. So if you're looking at a single-family home, or a parcel with a single-family home on it, that is developable land usually, not always, and it's already got a building on it. So it's really important to remember at this point, I'm going to explain why a single-family might not be developable land. It's really important to remember at this point that zoning doesn't care necessarily with what's on the lot now. Zoning is about future possibility. So you can also have sensitive land and excluded land. I'm going to walk you through the definitions in a minute of those. Zoning is the standards that allow you to build. So you've got a zoning bylaw that says the conditions under which you can build. And there's a lot of different standards that communities can have. But for the purposes of the compliance model, the ones that you see on the right are the key standards. Doing a lot of introducing you to terms today, because throughout the public process, you're going to hear them again and again. Now, excluded land, I realize that's a lot of tax, but essentially the high level is it's land on areas in which it is not possible or practical to construct multifamily housing. And so there's a list of what those might be. Surface water, which would come up in your geography, you can't build on surface water. Publicly owned land, unless it's determined to be something called developable public land. So the building that we're in now is not considered, it's excluded, it is not considered to be available for housing. That's what you need for public land. Wetland resources, protected open space, public rights of way, privately owned land on which development is prohibited, privately owned land for use for educational, institutional uses. And that's why I say you may have land that has a building on it, but for the purposes of this act, it's not considered to be developable land. Sensible, sensitive land is developable land that you might want to pay more attention to. And that could be something like land that is partially in a floodplain, land that is in not the budding-to-wetlands area, but maybe a wellhead protection area that's a little bit further out. It's land that a community might want to think about more carefully before rezoning for housing. It's sensitive for environmental reasons, it's sensitive perhaps for Title V reasons, for septic reasons, it's sensitive for water protection reasons. So we identify that, and actually you'll see a map tonight that has the identifications of all three of these types of land, because we want to have the conversation about whether or not it's appropriate to rezone this. So this is a very high level. You know, you have a law, you know that there are standards for how you prove compliance. You know that there's some factors that go into approving the compliance. Let's talk a little bit more specifically about what it means here for Groveland. So you are an adjacent small town. I heard somebody refer to that earlier. Means your deadline for compliance is December 30th, 31st, rather, 2025. So we have time for this conversation. I was working with commuter rail and adjacent communities this spring. Some of them, we were going very, very quickly to a spring town meeting. We've got a couple of fall town meetings. Having more time for our community conversations is going to be much more important for all of us. So we need to think about three requirements that most communities have. You have land area, which is in acres. And of that contiguous area, where is the size requirement? So some towns are doing multiple districts. If you are doing that, you have a, what they call a contiguity requirement. If you're not doing that, you don't have to worry about it. So you have an estimated number of residential dwelling units, that is your unit capacity, and you have your residential density. And you're going to see those colors appear again as we talk through what you need to do. So you don't have a minimum land area. That's one advantage of being an adjacent small town, is that you don't have, some communities have very specific numbers of acres that they have to hit. You don't do that. You don't have a station within your borders, so we don't have any sort of geographic location requirement. So of all the community types, you have the most flexibility in how you're going to address this. And if you're going to do more than one district, at least one of them needs to be 50% of the total district size. So let's say that we do a district of 10 acres. At least one of the districts must be five or more, must be five acres, because actually five acres is your minimum. If you do a, say, a 12-acre one, you could have a seven and a five, for example. And the seven would meet your contiguity requirement. Your minimum unit capacity, so this is the number of units you must zone for. Not build, it's not a target, but zone for is 130 units. And the compliance model is going to calculate that for you. Very important to understand that that is an estimate. The compliance model does not take into account every single factor that could go into building something. So for example, the compliance model does not address Board of Health regulations for septic. It does not address, but it does by pulling the excluded land out, it sort of addresses wetlands. It doesn't address some of the dimensional standards that might be in there. So when you think of this, just understand it's an estimate. Somebody might build, you know, you pass a zoning that gets you to 130 units for unit capacity, somebody might come in and just build 80 units, because there are other restrictions that zoning can't account for. So just think about this as an estimate. And then everybody, not just Groveland, has to meet a minimum density requirement of 15 dwelling units per acre. So let's break it down. You have 6,016 acres of land, which is 9.4 square miles. Thank you, Wikipedia. You don't have a requirement, the other one I've used, you know, there's a little stationary requirement, and you see a train, and it shows you how many acres you're required to have. You're not required to have anything. You don't have an acreage minimum. But you do have to have 130 units, and you have a minimum density of 15 units per acre. So with that calculation, your minimum is just under nine acres. Now, as I mentioned, you can have multiple districts, so you know, think about how you might divide that out. That's why I rounded it up to 10. As of 2020, you had 20, just over almost 2,600 residential units. So you're required to rezone to allow that calculated, that estimated unit capacity of 130 multifamily residential units. It's just over 5% of your total existing units. And the calculated capacity may be based on land that is already developed. That's often true in communities that have a lot of buildings already. We're going to rezone, but you may be rezoning over properties that are already developed. So unit capacity isn't the same thing as new units, right? One is zoning, one is an estimate, one is what's actually on the ground. So if you rezone 10 acres and there's already units there, we would be trying to find out what's the net difference is, are part of our discussion. So density is the number of units divided by the number of acres. That gives you dwelling units per acre. You have to have 15. So here's a couple of different ways of thinking about it. This is effectively 15 duplex units. And that would be the same thing as three five-unit buildings, right? So what I'm trying to show you here is that there are different ways that you can comply with the 15 dwelling units per acre. I've got some more images here, but the numbers on one side are the same as the numbers on the other. This is important, because when you start to think about the housing types that you might want to have, you want to think about the environmental impact. Do you have more but smaller buildings on a site? Do you have fewer but larger buildings? Again, these are choices that we're going to discuss throughout the process. Not expecting anybody to make any decisions today, but just trying to introduce you to the different things we're going to be talking about. So a little game to understand density a little bit more, because those aren't great. I randomly picked out some places in Groveland that I thought you might be familiar with potentially, mostly on main streets. I was looking for some certain sizes, just so I could show. 214 School Street. Any idea how many dwelling units per acre this is? What would be the density? All right. So it's land area, I'm going to give you some clues. Land area of 0.17 acres. It's got one unit on it, starting with a single-family home. I knew density is 5.83. Who said five? I heard a five. All right, very close. Okay, next, 107 Center Street. Any thoughts on this, just by looking at it? Okay? One dwelling unit per acre? Anybody else? All right. It's got 0.24 acres, so. Six, I heard a six. Three units on it. This is a three-unit building. 12.25, 12? Very nice. Yep. Yeah. No, no, three units. This, no, 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 this is, this is, now, this is exactly what I wanted to call out. Dwelling units per acre. So you've only got three units in this building, but on 0.24 acres, it equals a density of 12.25 dwelling units per acre. So that's why I'm saying you have to under- Sorry? Not quite. That's only a 12.25. So 23 Elm Park, this is just around the corner, but yes, we're getting there. All right. 0.26 acres. Any thoughts, looking at that building? Gases on how many units are in it? All right. So there are four units on this property. It's actually split among two buildings. Four units on the property, again, a quarter acre, trying to match up the acreage sizes here. 15. This one, right here, would meet your requirements. So what I, so you know, the discussion here is this function of what's the geography? What's the land? And what's the unit capacity on that land? That's what we're trying to figure out. So this last one, this is actually just down the street. Thoughts on this? Any guesses? Dwelling units per acre? All right, I'll give you a hint. This is actually quite a small parcel, so. Three units on it. Very tiny. 24.36. Yep. So again, these are, these are places that you already have. All right, 340 Main Street, just down the way, on the other side of Elm. This is 0.16 acres. It's got five units in it. That is 30.88 dwelling units per acre. So what I want you to think about, because we'll have more conversations about this, is the idea of what does the building look like as well? How well does it fit into the community? Because all of these, some are bigger than others, but all of these have the form of a single-family building, right? These aren't super-large buildings. And that's something we're going to continue to talk about. This one's, obviously it's got five units. It's a little bit bigger scale than some of the others, but it still has the pitched roof. I can see the larger shed dormer, so it's not that far off. So we'll be having that conversation. So here's where you all, the select board, get to do some work. You talk about, where do you put this? You've got roughly 130 units. I will say that communities try and get super-precise, the math doesn't work as precisely as people think it will. So we want to talk about where in Groveland would it be possible to add this unit capacity? The excluded land is in green, so you can't put it on the green. The sensitive land is available. You'll see when you see the map, I've got paper versions of this, that the hash marks are there to say that it's sensitive land. So the remaining land, the developable land, is available for development. So that's one consideration. What is the geography? The next consideration is, where is it appropriate to put housing? What factors make it useful? So this is just a generic parcel scoring map. What we do is we take the components of a walkable neighborhood. What is, you know, is this parcel close to a school? Is it close to a grocery store? Is it close to a bus line? Load them all in and see what that looks like. So the darker the color, the more of those walkable factors that has. And you can kind of see that. Now, the nice thing about this is we can tailor this. So as part of the community conversations, pulling from the comprehensive plan, you know, we just use kind of the standard factors that we use, but we can tailor this and rerun the map and say, okay, in Groveland, these are the important considerations we want for locating housing. So I have a map of this as well, so we can look at it. And then the final thing I have is Legos, which is a much more important planning tool than people think they are. Each Lego is worth five units. And let's see, what was I going to do? Originally, I was going to have the select board do some placing of, I promise, I'm not going to hold you to anything, but I was going to have you spend some time with the maps and the Legos. I only have two sets, so we could divide up into two groups and have everybody have a look at them, or I can give you all one set of maps to have a look at, and the selectmen can work with the Legos. That might be easier, given the numbers. So let me distribute the maps. Becca, yeah, I'm wondering if we can put these up on the wall somewhere?
You got some masking tape?
So Trimon? Can you build a Trimon? Everywhere else, I'm looking on that map. Half the places that she showed, the black area on the map, it's already shit-built.
Just put them on the floor, I'll try to circle them down. And have people stand around them. All right, I have for you. There are 30 of these. You only need 26. And so your job is just getting familiar with the map. I promise I won't hold you to what you put on here. But just getting familiar with the map and starting to think about where you would place these in the neighborhoods. I can divide it up, I've actually got another set, so I can put two of you on one map and two of you on the other. And you can switch. You do need a minimum site of seven acres, so 15 of these, or five acres rather, 15 of those would equal distribution across five acres. So why don't I get the other set, and you all can work with this map? There's the other set. Just take 10 minutes, 15 minutes to look through it. And while you do that, I'm going to be available to everybody here. So you've had a relatively quick introduction to the terminology. You've had an introduction to kind of thinking about, starting to think about how we would locate pieces, the types of criteria we would look at, some of the flexibility of the tools. Any questions at this point? Any thoughts?
It's hard. Yeah. It's a lot to think about, a lot to consider. But I think trying to attack it, like, we tried to attack it logically.
Yes.
That was the first pass, right? But as we get more information from this, maybe that will shift. But I think that's important throughout this whole process, is to look at it logically and making sure it doesn't conflict with the character of the town, which is, I know is really important.
Yes.
Yeah.
You do, you know, with zoning, with the MBTA communities, with Section 3A, it's really important to understand what would work for the community. Is how, you know, the legislation is out there, compliance is required. So how do you comply in a way? How do you comply in a way that best fits the needs of the community, and that's what we're going to be exploring? So.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, like I had mentioned, a lot of these areas which would be advantageous, they don't have town sewerage.
Yeah.
And then, yet trumping that would be, these, some of these areas would, I would rather see businesses that are going to contribute more in real estate taxes than a multifamily dwelling. And one of them would, the old Trimon property off of Main Street, close to the river. But I would rather see that as a business, businesses in there to help the tax rate. The, they don't require- The, they don't require as many services as a dwelling, a multifamily dwelling.
So, you know, I think the business aspect you bring up is an interesting one. I didn't, I didn't put it on the slides, but there has been an assumption that the zoning has to be for multifamily only, that you can't allow mixed use. It's actually not true. You can in fact allow commercial, you can allow mixed use. What you can't do is make it mandatory. Now, if you do allow a mixed use district, typically those building types are larger building types. So it gets back to the what is appropriate where for the town. There might be places where you want to see some larger building types, maybe on School Street, maybe heading down towards Groveland, that might be an option, certainly during the comprehensive planning process. That was something that was discussed. But it may be, and this is where I was saying that this Section 3A is not the only tool. This may not be the method of accomplishing that. So we've, we've seen communities kind of try to pack too much into this. So that's something else that we're going to want to talk throughout this process is what do you want to use this for? And is there a different zoning mechanism that would be more suited for some of the other goals that the town has? So, and that can absolutely be part of this conversation.
Jason, can you give him a mic?
Just a question. I don't know if you have the answer to this or not. I know we just discussed that there was some concern about having sewer lines. Is it possible to do this zoning but make it contingent that to build a multifamily dwelling that the person has to be responsible for expanding the, you know, some sewer infrastructure onto that space to help offset the cost from the town, but also increase, you know, to allow for that without having to add in septic or other things that are involved with that process?
So the short answer is no, but here's a longer answer. So one thing is that you, you can't develop without meeting Board of Health requirements, without meeting Conservation Commission requirements. So those are just a given. But the other, so, you know, that has to happen. If I were to come and, and buy a parcel and want to develop on something, if I can't meet those requirements, I can't do the development I want to do. I have to do that. But the other thing is in the zoning, you cannot put requirements on the multifamily use that are different from other requirements. So you can't make it more onerous to build the multifamily than it would be to build something else. So.
So you, you can't segregate multifamily versus single family, but if you zone the entire area to make that requirement, you could do that?
I would want to have a chat with a couple of people first before answering that question. Ones with legal backgrounds as opposed to planning backgrounds. But just in general, you know, the way, the way I've mentioned it before is you can't, you know, you can't say, hey, everybody else can be solar ready, but multifamily has to have 100% solar energy, right? You've got to, because now you're making it more expensive to build a multifamily relative to other uses. So. Other questions? So quick next steps. We have some analysis to do. We want to do a deep dive into the zoning. We want to do some other analyses onto the geography. Have a look at where, you know, what density do you have now in certain areas? Again, back to do you already meet the requirements? We've had some cases, this is particularly true in communities in Massachusetts where everything was built out before zoning actually came into play. And so if you look at the zoning, a community isn't compliant, but if you look at what's actually on the ground in certain areas, it might be. And then the trick is do you zone to meet what's already existing? So we're going to be running through a couple of different analyses. We're going to work with Rebecca and Annie to come up with the schedule of public meetings, and then we'll start to publicize those and hope we get even better attendance than we received tonight. So thank you very much for your time. Looking forward to working with you. I know a couple of people asked, so just for the, the tape, is the town has hired Innis Associates to help them find a path to compliance. So we are a private urban planning and design firm out of Newburyport, actually. So just wanted to make that, make sure that relationship was clear. And thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're going to circle back to the housing plan because Ed had more you wanted to add.
Jason, can I steal a- No, I just think that for a future meeting, we need to schedule a joint meeting between the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen so that we can see where they're going with this. And it just seems like it would make sense to me.
Do you know when their next meeting is for the Planning Board?
They just met last week.
Would have been there.
So I would imagine that they would meet the first Tuesday of July and the third Tuesday of July.
Oh, that's right, July, 4th of July.
Didn't they make it July 10th?
July 16th.
Oh.
Which is a Tuesday.
I know there's a, I know there's a time that the Planning Board are going to meet and, do you know when that is? Maybe Rebecca knows. When's the Planning Board going to meet?
July 16th.
I'm sorry, the 15th?
The 16th.
So, so we should be after that.
No, it's a Tuesday, and I don't know if it falls on our week or not.
So the next select board meeting is the 22nd. So we have our first-
June.
Yeah, so of July. Our next meeting is July 8th, and then we don't meet until July 22nd. The Planning Board, like you mentioned, would be-
So if you wanted to do it off, we could ask to be on the agenda for the 16th. Because I believe that's when they're going to be discussing the housing plan anyway. So that would be a good time to do it.
Sure.
And it works for you? What about you, Mark?
I agree. I think that'd work out best.
Would that work for you?
I can check my schedule.
Throw an extra meeting in there?
Just give me one second. It should be good.
I wonder if they'd be, will they be receptive to that date?
We'll have to check with them, but they're already meeting, they should be discussing it, so I don't see it being as a problem. They'll be there meeting, we'll just be attending.
Are they discussing that particular project just because it's still in the conceptual stage? Like it's not, nothing's been firmed up yet, right?
It's all the housing, the-
This as a whole.
Strategies on the housing production.
Yes.
Because eventually they do have to vote it.
Yeah.
And then after they do, we do.
Yes.
All right, so we'll, we'll check with them and let everybody know.
All right, what was the date again?
July 16th.
Seven o'clock on the 16th.
And I'll send out a reminder to the board as well, once I confirm with the Planning Board.
That they're receptive and then it'll all work out.
On the 16th at seven o'clock. Here, this building. You want a map to be able to get here?
I don't want to hit traffic.
What's that?
I don't want to hit traffic. All right, with that, it's going to be town administrator time.
I have no updates to give.
What?
I like it.
Make something up.
I have much to do and I have not had a very productive day. So once I get settled back in my routine, I will have much more to update you on.
Thank you. The select board timing reports. Ed?
The only thing I, I got is tonight, tonight we reappointed the Economic Development Committee. I think we ought to invite them to one of our meetings within the next month, get an update on, on what they're doing and if, if we could be any, of any assistance to them, or we heard from our state delegation tonight, and if they could be. So let's see what they've been doing. I think they've been in existence for over a year and we haven't heard back from them.
Sounds good. Mark? Becky?
I do not have anything today.
I don't have anything today either. So with that, our next regularly scheduled meeting is going to be Monday, July 8th at And anybody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Mark wants to know if he's going to be here.
And what's the address for the next meeting?
All in favor?
Nope.
Meeting is adjourned.